So it's the dog, the bomb dog, and we assume the responsibility if we did the first one. Because I think if you're using that dog, even though it's it's your personal dog, but if you're using it to work here, if, I mean, we should be paying for those services just like we do the first one. Because if it's helping keep our people safe, then we just want to address those things.
And like I said, since he's, and like I said, since he's, since he stays at my house, the explosive one, I don't, I don't expect y'all to, to, to put them in.
We'll just check with our legal counsel and, and the state, Texas municipal league. So, just so we can do what's right and what's fair.
Yes, sir.
You know, because we appreciate it. Counselor Williams. We had this debate at the last meeting, that's why I was asked to be moved to this meeting, July twenty second. Because we were supposed to get provided a written report from when we got the donation of the first dog, up until where we're at currently, and I still, we still don't have that report. Um, I, I don't know why we don't have that report. We, having that re- report would have allowed us to backcheck some of the things that Officer Mosley just said in reference to cost being high, the process for the dog. The, the dog assisted with other agencies, and Counselor Jones asked the question. Do a agency, City of Hempstead, Texas, the troopers or Prairie View University, they have to call out the dog? And we wanna pick, we wanna see how many callouts, we wanna see what agencies have helped. The, the, the stop you talked about was something with the state troopers, correct? And so that means the dog that we spend money on, we don't, we, we didn't, that money, anything that was received or confiscated, where does that go? Does, did that come through our evidence office with the City of Prairie View?
No, as a trooper stop.
Right. So, I, I, I just wanna be clear for the community, and I wanna be clear for city council. That's why we wanted a pa- paper report to be able to get this information, and then make a decision, then we come, so we can continue to support the police department. Then we come to find out that there's a second dog, and we talk about that's a bomb dog, and that's, I, I don't have any problems with the, the dogs, and I just want us to go through the process like we're supposed to, and hope we'll get the information. So I asked that the report that we asked for at the last meeting be put on the next agenda similar, so we can, uh, have a conversation.
Are we, do they pay? Do they pay you to provide assistance?
Other agencies?
Yeah.
So, the way it works with the dog, um, is kinda the same as if, uh, because if it gets to that point of trying to charge other agencies whenever they call out, because they put over the thing, hey, is there a K nine on duty within the county? We, we still fall within the county. Um, at that point, when you look at that, you also have to look at, okay, does that mean that anytime they have to come and assist us? Because we, like, we have one offshone night, so then are you gonna start, are they gonna start billing us? Because, you know, or something like that. Um, so because it's with-
If I could, and I don't know if you know this, do we know if we have an interlocal agreement with the county with this, with all the different agencies regarding law enforcement? Well, it, for law enforcement generally, so see if that would be covered in there?
Assist each other, what do you call that?
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid. They've got a mutual aid agreement in place. I'm not sure about the dog. Counselor Williams.
So, if, if we could take a look at that to see if it would cover the dog, then that would be probably a good thing to do as well.
That'd be a good thing. Counselor Williams?
Well, I think when this first came up with Chief Solomon, and it was a question asked about the dog, we didn't understand why we got a dog because the county actually has one. The county actually has a K nine that they use for six things. So then my question is, when it goes over the radio and they says a K nine available, you and the county can both show up?
So, the reason being is, so county does have it, but of course, we don't all work the same schedule. So sometimes I'm the only handler on, sometimes they're the only handler on, sometimes we're on at the same time. Uh, majority of the time, what the county will do is he will run I ten, and he'll run that area. I'll run this area right here. Uh, and so what'll happen is whenever they call for a K nine, you can't, you don't wanna have people on traffic stop forever. So for him to try to come from I ten all the way over here, especially if he's on a call, i- it's just not gonna work. So it's a lot easier to have it just like that.
Thank you.
So you, you travel, go ahead. You, you travel all the way to Highway six to render aid?
Yes. I did it that day whenever they called up. It was right there for two ninety on Highway six, so with the two ninety on Highway six, it was the troopers, and it was still in Waller County. And so they asked if a K nine was on, and I was on at the time.
So it was in the county?
Mm-hmm. It was in the county, and we, the city was still covered with law enforcement though. Because there was two of us on at the time, so the city didn't have, it wasn't like the city had no officer at the time.
How would we, how do we, so if you're on duty here, because you're, you're on duty to patrol in the City of Prairie View. If the county says, hey, we need a, a K nine, a mutual aid in Highway six or I ten, you, you're the only K nine, you're on duty, is your first thing to make sure that we have coverage? Or are you just going, because, because we're just, again, trying to understand this process. Can you walk us through that?
Yeah, I understand. So, I ten, that's far away. I'm not going all the way to I ten. Because then if something happens here, trying to get back here is gonna be crazy. Uh, so what happens is, I look at the totality of who's on shift. Usually it's two of us on shift during the day, two to three of us. And so if there's others that can take the call whenever I'm on shift, then I will go if it's not too far. And I make sure I'm still within a good distance where I can get back quick if I need to. But if it's just me, like for instance, today it was just me, if there was a call somewhere else, it's not something I would've gone and supported. You know, it would have to be something very, very serious for me to try to support it. But I'm not gonna leave the city uncovered with law enforcement.
Thank you.
One of, uh, one of the things that I wanna share while you're here for the benefit of the public, because this issue had come up. Um, and, and I'll read, we've got several, and we can get these to council. But this one was from the United Nations General Assembly. A certificate of appreciation presented to Sergeant Daryl Mosley. With grateful recognition of your outstanding contributions and support of the protective mission of the United States Secret Service, and it's signed by Director Clancy. So, I'm just reading that into the record, so we're all clear about the qualifications and the training that you received as a U.S. Army Dog Handler. Um, and again, there, there's several others, I won't get into it, but I think the Secret Service and your work in there is the epitome of your qualifications. So again, we thank you for your service, and it's just a pleasure to have you.
And, and I don't want to be misconstrued. We, we are appreciative, and we do, I appreciate everything that you're doing. But now, we didn't question your qualifications. We just wanted to make sure, as we didn't know today, that, you know, certain things, it's not so easy as like, oh, you can do it or not can do it. We still have protocols and things that were law before today. So please don't say anything that we, the questions that we ask today, uh, question your qualifications for anything that you're doing.
I, I just need clarification on this question. You said that two ninety on Highway six was Waller County? That Highway six?
Highway six in Hempstead. Oh, you thought, oh, no, 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 not in Hempstead.
So I just wanna, uh, ask, uh, did you hear that we had asked for it to be placed on the next city council meeting? For the written report?
I think he needs to put that motion up.
Well, yeah, I, I, yeah.
Because it never, we went into discussion, he said it, and then it went to discussion, and it was never, uh-
Just reading the motion again. I move that we have, uh, uh, provided K nine written report for the next meeting.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, the council be provided a written report for the K nine for the next meeting. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
All ready.
Counselor Williams?
Where does your report come from? Who, who, who is the person that we expect this report to come from?
The officer in charge of the police department. The officer who's in charge, whoever, there is an officer that has been designated in charge of the Prairie View Police Department. We've asked this officer for this report. This is going on the second month. So, the officer will provide us a report from when we got the dog onto, to the, up to this point. There should be reports on the dog, and if any money has been, uh, brought back, or just again, he, they could have, could have a hundred stops, and we don't know that. We just want the information and report from not Officer Mosley, but for the officer that is in charge of the Prairie View Police Department. I'll work with Officer Mosley on that report, because no one knows that but you. And as the administrator, I'll get with you, and we'll turn that over and get it ready for council. Do you have something, another unreadness?
Yes.
I understand that, uh, Officer Ross was here, but I think when Officer Ross came, the dog was already, I don't know if he was wearing down, but he wasn't active, right?
The handler was on you, uh-
Single.
Right, so he wouldn't have any information because the dog was at the.
Right.
So, uh, before I get into my readiness, I think, uh, I think that my, my understanding is correct. Council is asking for, for documentation from the time we've had the dog, until, there should be some record of that, I would imagine. So, uh, my unreadness wasn't the fact that I think we need to be specific in what we want in this report. We were talking about, we wanna report, we wanna report, but, uh, we talked about, you know, a very different things about, but we never actually ironed out what detail you want in this report. And so I think it's important to, to communicate specifically what this report is supposed to look like in the details we would like to see in this report.
At the last meeting, Officer Ross was here. We communicated what we would like to have in the report at the last conversation. We wanted to know how had the dog been, the K nine been used? What stops the K nine has been involved in? And has there been any marked monetary funds that has been recovered from the K nine? Those are three direct questions that's on the, if you wanna go to, uh, the YouTube video and watch the, the minutes, or they're in our minutes that was recorded by our city secretary.
So now they're on these minutes?
No, I have no, but that's it. Thank you.
Call for a question.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are your shows unanimous? Unanimous. But again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Officer. Thank you.
And, uh, so, council, council, you're gonna check on the second dog and see what we may need to do to make sure it's on the record and working in the city and that type of thing?
Yes, sir, and if it needs to be on the agenda as an action item, I will make sure that it's on there.
Great. Thank you. Item four, discuss and consider reviewing Bureau Veritas fee schedule and application. Counselor Williams. Counsel, uh, in your packet should be a, a packet of, yes, it should be under that. Um, under the packet, what that had this map, you should see some applications. And so I don't know if you recall that we had adopted, um, some applications that Bureau Veritas had done for other municipalities. I had a conversation with, uh, some, with the- It's, it's, it should be behind this.
It's under the map.
It's under the map. It's under the map. Yep. Um, I had been working with, uh, someone from Bureau Veritas who updates these for different municipalities, and I wanted council to review, um, so we, remember, we had about a year and a half ago, or maybe two, we updated the application that we were using, um, for residential, commercial, and certificate of occupancy. And so I wanted y'all to look at, all they did was, um, add some, um, was put the city logo on it, and then they added some information. Since I am not the expert on what specific documents, um, what, what specific documents are needed for each transaction, or what's in the current folders, I wanted us to have a, a copy of this, and I'll, I'll ask this to move to the subsequent, uh, agenda for us to, uh, have a discussion, um, on the new documents that should be in every file, um, and, and kind of the process in which, uh, we, we currently have. And so again, this is for everybody to have a copy, and for us to-
Second.
Who's speaking? Was he, was that all, all that a motion?
He made the motion to move it to the next meeting.
Okay. You've heard the motion that, uh, item four, discuss and consider reviewing Bureau Veritas fee schedule and application. We move to the next meeting agenda. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
All ready.
Counselor Williams? Uh, my first, uh, unreadiness is that the fee schedule, there was, I think, who have to, um, be in the conversation. Uh, we approved last meeting to update the amendment, the fee schedule for Bureau Veritas. Remember, we also voted in the twenty nineteen, um, House Bill something, twenty-five fifty-two or something, that changed our fee schedule, so we wanna make sure that our current fee schedule, uh, has been, um, updated as well. Yeah, that's been done. Thank you. Counselor Williams?
Oh, I was gonna say, that was down on the Bureau Veritas side. I think they're asking for the city ordinance that reflects that to also come back to the city council, so it can be changed.
Yes.
My, my readiness was just, uh, this is, this is a document that we've already approved, right? This is just in, in Prairie View version?
Yes, but we've also made changes, and, and the reason why I want us to review it at the next meeting is that we wanna make sure that for developments, both residential, commercial moving forward, that we're using the updated, uh, documents, and we may need to put like whatever date on the bottom, and that every, that Miss Cortez and the merit and, uh, the office department who, who handles this is using all the updated documents. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed have the same right? Eyes have it. Item five, discuss and take action on Mayor Allen's appointments for board of adjustments. Uh, PV Volunteer Fire Department Assistant Chief, Regent Bordeaux. Uh, Dr. Emmanuel Zui, professional engineer in the College of Engineering. Uh, Munir Kudus, uh, PhD, Dean of the College of Business. Uh, PV Volunteer Fire Department Captain Chad Cryer. Uh, Dean Pamela Obi-Oman, professional engineer, Dean of the College of Engineering. Uh, Paige Hines, College of Engineering student. Laurie O'Campbell, College of Engineering student. What's council's pleasure?
So first, I, I wanted to ask, uh, for these specific people, uh, what was, what was the ideology for these specific people?
Some of it came from recommendations from, uh, the College of Engineering, but also because the technical variances, and, uh, for example, the Checkers Restaurant and Shell is in need of a variance, and because the city had not had a board of adjustments. And the variance has to do with things like engineering, distance, architecture, fire safety. That's why you got a combination of technical and engineering and a business person on here. Uh, and, and we've had a lot of discussion on using the same people throughout the city. Uh, other than Dr. Mizui, who I've worked with on various projects, the rest of them, well, Assistant Fire Chief, I mean, he just does things around the city, but, and he sits on our Office of Emergency Management. But these are a different people, but also I've been reminded that we need to have people on committees that know something about what it is we're asking them to do. Uh, we've got Captain Chad right here with our Volunteer Fire Department for the city. So from a fire safety standpoint, him and Assistant Chief can be discussing, is this variance an issue? Is offensive, they're looking at, you know, putting up, things like that. That was the rationale for picking all these people.
Uh, what would these meetings take with, oh, in, in the afternoon time, evening? Or you, you guys aren't that far?
No.
Um, also, another question I have, because it was, uh, and talking to our attorney, regardless of who we pick to be on this board, there was still gonna be education and training needed along, uh, with our planning and zoning board, so they can understand the differences and how to interact and the work that we need for. So how would that coexist?
Well, this, this one is a requirement, because, uh, for example, what's needed is not a replat or a rezoning. So it's totally out of the purview of planning and zoning. They have nothing to do with this.
No, I understand.
Uh, the board of adjustments is separate for variances, and then they deal with those other things. So they wouldn't interact, they can sit in on each other's public meetings, but that's about it.
Yeah, but he wanted them to go through a track, well, not he wanted, but it was recommended that they could go through a training process together. Because when the application come in and we're going forward, we don't, just because they have the expertise, they also like the training, and which makes up a board of adjustment.
Well, whatever training they need, we, we can do, but they understand the, um, the fire, life safety things and that sort of thing. But if, if there's a training that they need, right now, we're just trying to get a board that we haven't had active, uh, for many years. And we have a variance on itself, just trying to get one set up, so we can address that variance, because that location is waiting on us to, uh, to move forward.
Uh, did you answer the question about what time they're meeting? Because like I said, I know, like, because there are also professors, there's students, and of course, any time they meet, I would assume they have to have a call. Uh, so were there any discussions about that?
I, I believe your ordinance says that once they're formed, formed, that they set their meeting times.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I'm saying, so was it-
There's none set, because we're trying to get them formed right now. Counselor?
My, this, my question is, um, outside of Captain Cryer, do many of these people live in the, in the, I don't, I mean, I know, I know Chief Bordeaux, because he's here all the time, but he, he doesn't live here. And so, uh, yeah, but I'm looking at, you know, the board of adjustments for the city, granted, they are qualified, but referred, you know, citizens saying, uh, other meeting about how they would like people in these committees to live in it. And I, 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 I don't, I don't know, other than the, the two firefighters, I don't know anybody on this list. So do they live in the community, or?
I think only from, uh, from my, my, um, knowing, so two things. One, I only know, uh, Captain Cryer, Chad, and then weren't we supposed to receive the application of these, uh, uh, appointments of these members that they filled out to give that, give us some information?
Uh, that's what we told last meeting, that, uh, Mayor was gonna come with some qualifications that came recommended, uh, from our attorney, and then he's gonna give us the application, and we asked what the application would be. Um, they'll stay as long as the rest of the application though.
So, Mr. Mayor, like, the board, so, I, I wonder, I have two questions. First question, are we only trying to approve for the Board of Adjustments? Because the City of Prairie View before has had the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, which are two, they do two different things. Well, one is, one does one, and one does another thing. So I wanna be very clear that we're only approving Board of Adjustments? Or are we talking more Board of Adjustments and Appeals, because that adds another factor onto it? It's my understanding we needed a Board of Adjustments, council. I'll be easily, you know, understanding correctly.
The Board of Adjustment and zoning appeals is typically the same board. Um, Board of Adjustment, for example, would do a, a variance to a fence height, to a setback requirement. The other thing that they're listed statutorily to do is an appeal from zoning administrator's decision, which rarely happens, but it's the same board. So if that's what you're asking about in a field, yep.
So, I, I wanted us to make sure that we're ta- talking about apples on apples and not apples and oranges. So I don't know if we need to add, add appeals to it. Second, the zoning board of adjustment is the body that established to hear appealing, appeals of decisions regarding, uh, regarding rendered by the zoning administrator or for us planning and zoning. Um, would interpret unclear-
That, that's different. It's not the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's only the zoning administrator. So it's, it's, would be an appeal of a factual decision, not of a, uh, we can change this from a residential to a commercial. It's not recommendations.
Okay.
P and Z is only a recommending body to the city council. They don't make any decisions at all. This board actually does make decisions.
Right, so they interpret unclear provisions in the zoning ordinance, decide on applications by landowners to permit, and build or, uh, buildings or land use which vary from the zoning regulations. This committee would do that. And so it kinda goes back to the point. We want as many people who live, again, I don't think it should have all. We want qualified people, but we just need a different, we need some additional names to have a mix, to make sure we have some community people. Uh, I do like, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, you have some experts and some other names and people, but we definitely need to put, pull this back, and, uh, get some additional community people, uh, on here. What's council's pleasure? Item five.
So, with y'all, I, I express the same sentiments, like, I, I truly do appreciate, like, people having qualifications, but I also think it would be important for the community to have people, uh, you know, are established on the community. Uh, so, if you could get us with some, with some more names of people. Now, one, is it, it doesn't have to be seven, or could it be?
It's five and two all of them.
Five and two all of them, right.
And can you also, uh, notate who's gonna be what, when, when you bring it back to us? Well, what, what, what I'm gonna do is, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna help council, help me help you. Because we have our two fire safety, life safety folks who we're very aware of, and we know are actively in this area. Uh, Captain Chad and I were out late night on the campus with the, the student and the gas leak. Um, but what I want to do, because we have primarily retirees, and primarily educator retirees, and students in our community, if I'm gonna defer to some of the people that council recommends, because if the appointments with the time it takes to do this, and talking to, and getting people to volunteer isn't good enough for you, then I need you to help me bring some folks. Because on one hand, remember, we have a lot of committees, boards, commissions, and we keep placing the same people around, and because these have, don't have that requirement, we have the university, who on one hand, you keep talking about, we need to work with them, and we don't have relationships, and we got five people on the university willing to give us their time and expertise. So I need recommendations from the council, and I need them this week, because those people, we are holding up a major development in trying to get this board of adjustments done, because you want some other people that I don't know, I'm willing to defer. You get some engineers, some technical people in the community, and consider them on, but I need five of them.
What about Mr. Muse? We, we're not saying the whole board.
Right, we're not saying the whole community.
We would like some people from the community, you need all of the board as well.
Well, I know Mr. Muse's schedule, he's, he's sat on some boards, he was on the flood control committee with me, and then he went back to work full-time. You know, uh, we don't have it, like you said. It's like that.
I've asked him already.
Oh, see, so he's already been asked and denied that one, so.
You a engineer, right?
Yes.
We're not gonna be able to throw off a name right now, um, but-
But I do, I do wanna say that, Mr. Mayor, I, I understand the importance, as I also work with the attorney to send the email to even get it going, um, but also, it was an agenda item for us to discuss that wasn't placed on the agenda, in which some council had sent name that was recommended to be a part of the board of adjustment.
Well, that one I didn't see. Because I don't recall receiving any names for, I, I do recall when you said, like you said, we needed to put it together, because we discussed it before, but I never seen any names, so if council can get that to me, the sooner the better, definitely this week, because we need to, uh, move on this.
Because we already, we already had some names, so yeah, just send a, send a email again.
Uh, move that, we move item agenda five to our session committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that, uh, agenda item number five be moved to, uh, the next meeting. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions? All those in favor say aye? Opposed have the same right? Eyes have it. City council reports. Counselor Williams?
Citizens, it's always an honor and privilege to be with you tonight. Uh, first, I want to, uh, commend the work of the Prairie View employees, uh, all the employees from public works to the police department, uh, who have been, uh, helping us as we, uh, uh, continue to make the- Uh, all the employees from public works to the police department, um, who have been, uh, helping us as we, uh, uh, continue to make the city better. Um, I want to also, uh, take a moment, I had the opportunity to go to Mr. Brother Jerry Wayne Kelman's, uh, uh, funeral service and, and, uh, and his passing, and so want to give a condolences to his family. Same, I would like to give condolences for Councilman Rand, Randall's grandmother who passed, um, um, so we all, at the last minute, also gave some condolences. So, wanted to do that as well. As far as troop nineteen oh six, we had an opportunity, we went camping in Dickinson, Texas. Uh, um, we took some boys out, um, that's the same morning, we also went to Elton Air, uh, Airfield and they worked on the aviation merit badge. And that's the same morning where I, I drove back, uh, the same to get to the funeral, uh, to, uh, to, to be here with, uh, one of our community members. Uh, we had three scouts that left yesterday from Prairie View to the World Jamboree, uh, in West Virginia. We also had one leader that went with them. Um, the World Jamboree has not been in the United States, uh, si- forty years ago was here. And so the World Jamboree is, it goes around the, the world, um, and it is West Virginia. We had three boys from our troop that, uh, went and one leader. I've had the opportunity to, uh, be on a generational conversation panel, similar to panels that happened with the Houston NAACP quarterly of conversations that took place at the Community of Faith. I'm also had the opportunity this past, uh, week in Detroit, uh, to go to an economic empowerment, uh, summit. Um, talking about opportunity zones and new market tax credits. I think I've also sent some emails to, uh, our, our attorneys and the mayor in reference to hosting a conversation. I wanna host the meeting on Tuesday at one o'clock. If you're available, please meet me in the conference room. And we're gonna talk about, for all the people who, who have a lot to say or have some spare time, we can work on, uh, doing some things in the community. Um, the second thing is, uh, Prosperity Now, which is an organization around housing and development, uh, uh, is going to help us to be able to identify our census tract and also help to work with new, uh, market tax credits. There is a, uh, fund, an HBCU investment trust that is doing new markets tax credits around HBCUs around the country. I had the opportunity to have a, a meeting with the people who are in charge of those funds. And so we want, we have to, as a community, decide what we wanna do or the direction in which we wanna go. I E, if we're going to do applause or doing something that does not necessarily have to do with the university, what we're gonna do talk about, similar to some of the development that, uh, Dr. Brown had talked about here in our community. So if there's any projects that are going on, uh, we would be able to use the new market tax credits. If you want information, please come to the meeting on Tuesday at one o'clock. Uh, next Tuesday. Um, uh, I also represented the, uh, H, uh, city council HGAC. I asked, uh, Councilman Wallace, um, about the meeting tomorrow. I don't know if he'll be able to make it, but in your packet was this map, council? Um, one of the reasons why I put this in there is because they're having a meeting in reference to the Cypress Creek watershed. If you look at where Prairie View is and what we've been talking about, um, you'll look at that blue is a water line and that is in some of the development.